Okay. Good afternoon, good afternoon to everyone. Welcome to the Sacramento City Council. Let us call the role, please, to establish a quorum.
Thank you, Councilmember Carr, Councilmember Warren, Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Guerra, Councilmember Shinier, and Mayor Steinberg.
Here. A quorum is present, as I understand it. Councilmember Jennings, Ashby, and Hanson will not be present this afternoon.
That's correct.
Thank you very much. Members, let me just, before I turn it over to Mr. Devlin and members of the public, explain what we hope to accomplish today. The first order of business is going to be a city council workshop on cannabis. And why a workshop? Because while our staff and our council and our community is working feverishly on bringing together all of the pieces to stand up an appropriately regulated cannabis industry in Sacramento, frankly, some of it has been so disparate in terms of the different pieces coming at different times that we all felt after the last one that it would be important to summarize all of the different pieces of this in one workshop format so that we can all better understand and the public can better understand exactly how this all fits together. Then secondly, we're going to switch the order, if you will, after the workshop. We'd like to move directly to item number three, which is the establishment and implementation of the so-called CORE program, the Cannabis Equity Program. And then if we have time, we'll take item two, which is an ordinance relating to cannabis distribution, third. And so let us begin the workshop. And again, we intend to facilitate and organize as many workshops as we can on important subject matters in the city because these are big subjects and they deserve this sort of attention. I'd like to ask Joe Devlin, who's our chief of the Office of Cannabis Policy and Enforcement and the Office of the City Manager, to come forward and begin presenting. Mr. Devlin, can I say one thing before you get started? That is, a couple of things. Number one, I would ask the members if you would allow Mr. Devlin to finish his presentation before we ask questions, okay? I think that's important, so he can get through it. The only other thing I want to say that I think might be of some help to you that you're going to reiterate, but it comes up again and again and again, and I just want to get it out there before we begin anything. And that is the difference between the various nexus studies that sometimes get conflated. It's just worth putting out there. So the nexus study that we are going to talk about today, when we talk about CORE, is not the nexus study that hasn't been completed yet. It isn't the study that asks about the relationship between the so-called 1%, the so-called 1% and the impact on neighborhoods. That still, that work still remains to be done. Under the CORE program that we'll be discussing today, it's a different nexus study that in fact has already been completed. It is a study about where the people are who have been convicted of cannabis-related crimes in the past as we seek to direct our equity program to the businesses and the individuals in the neighborhoods who have the right to benefit from the fact that we're creating this new industry. That is a difference and a distinction that I just want you, members and members of the public, to keep in mind as we proceed with this discussion, that the big nexus study around neighborhood responsibility, the 1%, that still remains to be done, okay? Mr. Devlin?
Thank you. Is that going to come up? There we go. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Joseph Devlin with your Office of Cannabis Policy and Enforcement. It is a great honor and a privilege to be here before you today. We're going to be reviewing, providing you with a content-rich workshop today covering with a number of parts, an industry overview, a snapshot of our current policies and enforcement status, as well as our public education strategies. And then finally, a glimpse into the future of some of the future policy considerations that are likely to be coming your way. The march towards legalization really began in 1996 with adoption of Proposition 215. It culminated, or concluded rather, with the passage of Propositions in '64. And finally, SB 94 that merged the medical and adult use systems. In that 21-year period, we had an industry really grow up and become very dynamic and very sophisticated. And that has added to the level of complexity with some of the challenges that we are dealing with today. Our own history with legalization of cannabis goes back to 2009. In 2011, the city first adopted ordinances for cannabis dispensaries. And then between 2011 and 2016, it was a relatively quiet time policy-wise. And it wasn't until 2017, '16 and '17, that we began to fill in our regulatory scheme. And then not until 2017 did we begin to really develop the infrastructure necessary for enforcement. I think if you push back and take a broad view of what we're really doing and what Proposition 64 is, is really the attempt to manage this substance in a different way. As a nation and as a state, we attempted prohibition. We tried maximum enforcement, and to be honest, it didn't work very well. And so what Propositions in '64 really is, and what we're attempting to do, is apply economic principles and market forces for the regulation of this substance for the purposes of protecting public health and protecting public safety. So, industry has a number of different segments. The dates to the right of each of those is when the council has taken action to adopt that particular regulatory infrastructure. Cultivation is just that. It is the growing of cannabis flower. Flower is the term, is the industry term for harvested cannabis plant. There's a subcategory of cultivation of nurseries. Nurseries can't produce flower, but they can sell immature plants to retail facilities and other cultivators. Manufacturing has a number of different components to it as well. At its core, manufacturing is the extraction of cannabis flower into an oil. And then from an oil, the conversion of that into some sort of finished product such as an edible or topical or a tincture. Testing laboratories are an important function. That is really the quality control piece. They are independent. So if you're involved in the cannabis industry in any way, shape, or form, you can't have any involvement in a testing laboratory. Distribution is a newly created segment of the industry by the state. Distributors are that middle person between businesses. They are responsible for moving product through the supply chain as well as ensuring that testing has occurred and that taxation, taxes have been paid. And then dispensaries. Dispensaries are perhaps the most outward-facing part of the industry. We have 30 storefront dispensaries in Sacramento. We are also currently accepting applications for non-storefront or delivery-only dispensaries. All the products that come from, or that arrive to a dispensary have to come through a distributor. Again, that distributor is really that middle person. And then finally, microbusinesses. Microbusinesses are the only state-available permit that the council has yet to consider. Microbusinesses are a small to medium-sized business that is vertically integrated, meaning that they perform at least three of the four functions of cultivation, manufacturing, distribution, or retail. They're limited by the square footage of canopy that they can have. And that item, microbusinesses, you will see on a future slide for future policy considerations. This is the slide, really shows just how the supply chain works, really in a simplified version. As you can see, that distribution is really that go-between, between each segment of the business. And the public's only interaction with the cannabis industry is really at that retail level. Overview of our permits. As you know, opening a cannabis business requires several approvals from the city of Sacramento. One of those is a conditional use permit issued by our planning department. To date, we've received 224 CUP applications. 116 of those have been approved to date. The chart on the left you can see is applications over time. That first initial high number, that's when we began accepting applications for cultivation. And then it dipped down. And then that kind of middle line is where we began accepting applications for manufacturing and distribution and delivery. And where it takes a start, drop, that's really the current period that we are in. We've received two applications in the last 30 days for conditional use permits. I think it's safe to say at this point, the rush for conditional use permit applications is over. And I would expect that, barring anything unforeseen, that we may see a few come in from, a few a month maybe come in. Our business operating permits. We've received 265 business operating permits, not counting our 30 storefront dispensaries. I think if you look down the different categories, I think you'll see a pretty diverse representation of different businesses. And while we can't, there's no assurance of how successful any of these businesses may be, I think we at least have the beginnings of a diverse industry that will hopefully be stable over time. Processing these applications has been a challenge. Each application is detailed. Beyond that, the process itself is complicated by the fact that we are dealing with existing businesses that have been operating for some amount of time. Of the 265 applications that we have received, we've issued three operating permits and 15 non-operational permits. We'll go into that a little bit more. This is a very simplified version of our process. It begins with the application of a conditional use permit. Once someone has either obtained a conditional use permit or at least applied for a conditional use permit, they can then submit a business operating permit. That permit is very detailed, includes security plans, water efficiency plans, odor control plans, community relations plans, and a number. That application is then routed to a number of departments, fire department, police department, Department of Utilities, as well as risk. And each one of those departments gets to review that application and deem it satisfactory or not. Once someone has, that application's been deemed complete and approved, and they have an approved conditional use permit, they're then put into one of two categories. They're either a non-operating business, or they're one of our existing operators. For the existing operator, they then go into the building permit phase. And they have to submit complete plans. And it's not until that they have obtained their building permit, gone through and obtained a certificate of occupancy from the building department, will they be eligible to receive a business operating permit. For those folks that are operating, the business operating permit is kind of both the carrot and the stick for ensuring that they are swiftly moving towards compliance to meeting all of our requirements as it relates to building standards and fire and safety codes. For the folks that are not operating, we have issued non-operational business permits. And we're doing that for a couple of reasons. One, the industry has asked for it. For them, it helps them with finishing up or securing financing. Secondly, for us, it's a cash flow issue. We received applications for business operating permits over different fiscal years, and in a future slide we'll show that. But essentially, the lag time between issuing the permits has caused a gap because those permits are not going to renew in time. But nonetheless, if we, once we, if we grant a non-operation, non-operating building permit, they then still have to submit for all of their building permits, complete their build-out, go through all of their walkthroughs, and get a certificate of occupancy as well before we will convert that non-operating permit into an operational permit. Again, this is a very oversimplified version of our actual process. We, early on, we brought in a consultant to help us map out the actual workflow itself. And when they finished, the consultant said it was the most complicated workflow he'd ever had to work through. And I don't want to spend much time lingering on it, but it actually looks like that. There's just a lot of checks and balances to this, a lot of people involved. Business operating permit revenue. So when I mentioned that the permit's not renewing because there's been a delay in issuing them and it causing a gap, this is what I was referring to. So because this is a fee-for-service program, each one of these, those three bars should be ideally lined up or really close to it. The revenue in green that comes in should be lined up with what that budget expectation is, and expenditures in yellow should line up with, should line up with revenue. As you can see, between '17 and '18, we saw a significant increase in the amount of permit revenue from roughly $1 million to $3.7 million. That revenue did not meet expectations. We thought that there would be more permits coming in. The good news is that expenditures did not exceed revenue. However, again, because those permits aren't going to renew in 2019, there's going to be a gap. And council's already taken action to correct this, allowing us to use excess BOT to fund that gap until the year 2020, when these permits normalize, and these three bars should line up equal. Our business operating tax. As you are aware, the city collects a 4% business operations tax on all cannabis businesses. The green bar that's budgeted, I'll just say that that doesn't go all the way back to 2012, not that it wasn't in the budget, but it just wasn't called out specifically as projected cannabis revenue until 2017. Years prior to that, it was budgeted, it was just lumped into the business operations tax as a whole. As you can see, in fiscal year '18, revenue exceeded budget expectations. And this year, we took in nearly $6 million in BOT, up from 4.8. If you add all of the blue lines up together, year-over, cannabis tax revenue has contributed nearly $23.5 million to the city's general fund over the last seven years. We anticipate that this will continue to grow as more businesses come online. However, predicting this revenue is difficult. The transition into the new state regulations and all the compliance requirements, in addition to the new state taxes, has caused shift in consumer spending habits and added additional cost to businesses. While the BOT exceeded budget expectations this year, again, that excess BOT will need to be paid, will be needed to pay for both the legal and illegal enforcement in FY19 until those business operations permits, again, normalize in 2020. Enforcement. Enforcement is a very important component of what we do. Proper enforcement supports the city's goals of protecting public health and protecting public safety. It can be thought of in really two categories. One, compliance of permitted businesses. And then, two, enforcement against the illegal market. We've made great strides in standardizing enforcement. As noted in the audit, the audit's report, between 2011 and 2017, the city did not have regular enforcement programs and also lacked some essential processes to ensure compliance. Over the last 15 months, we've developed processes and secured adequate resources to regularly inspect businesses. We now conduct monthly inspections using a checklist to ensure compliance and consistency. We've established clear policies and processes for permitting and have additionally contracted for additional audits through our vendor, who has recently changed her name, formerly Muni Services. We also hold regular stakeholder meetings to make sure that we are sharing important information. Lastly, we have formed a security working group that includes industry professionals, security professionals, the Sacramento, and the Sacramento Police Department. This group is working to develop best practices to make sure that the industry is safer. The other part of enforcement is really around the illegal retail. And in California, we really have two illegal, two illicit markets. We have one, an internal market that is serving residents that live here, and then there's an export market. California grows somewhere between five and 10 times what we consume. In Sacramento, that is primarily illegal residential cultivation, but we also do have illegal retail. We've done a good job so far, I think, of cracking down on illegal retail as it has come up. We have probably 100 illegal delivery companies operating in the city. And in order to address this, the city, the city attorney's office and the Sacramento Police Department, along with the Sacramento Office of Cannabis Policy, will be working more closely together to holistically address the illegal retail that's taking place in our city. The other side of this, as you are all very familiar with, is illegal residential cultivation. They are a nuisance and a danger to our community. And in 2017, it was estimated that we had 1,000 illegal grows in our city. The Sacramento Police Department took the lead on this issue and has made significant progress. Deputy Chief Paletta and his team deserve a lot of the credit. They've done an amazing job. And in really the last eight months, they've reduced the number of illegal grow houses by half. This is a simplified version of the workflow that takes place. Essentially, the police department is proactively identifying homes. They go out and sync, obtain a warrant, and then execute that warrant with housing and dangerous building officers as well. They then confiscate that product, confiscate all of the grow equipment inside, and issue an admin penalty. We've issued, I was just told, 216 citations. That slide says 208, but I got 216 on the way down citations as of today. And we have collected nearly $700,000 in administrative penalties so far. I think most importantly, in just eight months, we've reduced the number of illegal grow houses by half. And again, I'd like to recognize and thank Deputy Chief Paletta and the city attorney's office, and all of the departments that have played a role in making this happen. Public education. We know that public education is important, is important to the city council. And in fact, in states like Oregon and in Colorado, the number-one wish I would have done it differently was, I wish I would have launched a public education campaign when legalization happened. And in Sacramento, we are very fortunate to be a partner of the Future Forward campaign. We are one of the, one of the few cities, maybe, I dare say, the only city with a really thorough, robust youth education campaign. We began with, in 2017, with developing a microsite, really designed to educate the general public around the changing of laws. We added some youth information to it. But again, the focus of that campaign was really to inform the general public as to the changing laws that just take place around cannabis. Most importantly, we were able to partner with Sacramento County Office of Education and be a part of this campaign to inform young people of the hazards and risks associated with using cannabis. Joel O'Ork with SCOE took the lead on securing a $3 million grant and built a huge coalition of great partners. The advertised, the marketing campaign includes television, print, radio, as well as web. They're also even in the movie theaters throughout time. For me, I can't underscore like how big of a deal this was, that we get to be a partner in this, and this is actually happening at the same time that legalization happens. And Joel and O'Ork at SCOE deserve all the credit on this. They've done a great job putting this program together. In addition to that, we are also in the design phase for an insert in the Sacramento News and Review. Again, this is all intended and designed towards youth education and, as well as information for parents. We're going to produce overages that can be made available at libraries and other community centers. That should go out in the next month or so. And in addition to that, we've also launched the first-of-its-kind retail employee training program. And I think this is something that's also pretty progressive and smart. We have found a vendor that, whose experience is in alcohol and tobacco retail sales training. They've developed a curriculum for cannabis dispensary employees of all the things that they need to know, how to spot for fake IDs, general safety concerns, things that you can and cannot say. The program includes basic overview of the endocannabinoid system. And what we are adding into it is the youth education information. And so the retail employees in Sacramento are also going to carry around with them not just knowledge about cannabis and maybe some of its medical benefits, but they're also going to carry around the knowledge of why young people shouldn't be using it. We're going to begin that in September. We are offering, we're going to be offering it for free for retail dispensary employees. And while it is not a condition of their permit, we're going to, I think, strongly encourage them to all attend. So, future, on to future policy considerations. At the conclusion of the workshop, you'll have two items for your consideration. One is the CORE program. The other one is an amendment to the city's distribution ordinance. We have additional presentations for those, if so desired. The CORE program, if approved, will establish a small business support center intended to help those either in the cannabis industry or who want to be in the cannabis industry successfully launch a business. There are two fundamental eligibility requirements for this program. One needs to have either been arrested for a cannabis-related crime in Sacramento or have an immediate family member, or be an immediate family member of someone arrested for a crime. The second classification is residing in one of the ZIP codes that was disproportionate, that had experienced a disproportionate number of arrests during the time that was evaluated. The benefits of the program include a $0 fee application, priority processing of their conditional use permit, access to the CORE business support center, as well as priority processing for any new or reissued storefront dispensary permits. It also satisfies the Neighborhood Responsibility Plan requirement. Over the last several months, city staff has continued to work with program advocates, and I believe that we have arrived at a place with their support for all the program elements. If the council adopts the core program this afternoon, our next steps would be to release the request for proposals to have someone, some third party facilitate that program. The other element, the other item up for consideration is amendments to the city's distribution ordinance. We currently have what I would describe as an arbitrary square footage limitation on distribution. Staff is recommending that we remove that limit, that we remove that square footage cap and adopt a tiered system based on grocery receipts to better align with the state. The proposal also creates a transportation-only permit, as well as creates a self-distribution permit for small manufacturers with grocery receipts of less than $100,000. And while that self-distribution permit would, similar to the small manufacturing permit, would not be subject to a conditional use permit requirement, their business operations permit is subject to council call-up. Other issues in the process, we're looking to, we're looking for ways to continue the good work of the public education campaign. Those funds are going to run out at the end of June in the coming year, and if we want to continue that, we're going to have to, we're going to have to identify some revenue sources to make that rehappen. We're going to continue to refine our security protocols to make the industry as safe as it can be, and we are completing the neighborhood response, the nexus study related, the nexus study related to the neighborhood responsibility plan. I'll say, the city attorney's office continues to work with the consultant on legal issues relating to the report. We anticipate that the report will be finalized shortly, and staff will provide the recommendation to the council on how the city should proceed. And then lastly, and importantly, we're going to be expanding our proactive enforcement of illegal retail in the city. We're almost home. Future policy considerations, we still have a little bit of work to do ahead. The Law and Legislation Committee is going to be hearing a proposal to put a moratorium on delivering the southeast industrial area on August 28th, and then microbusinesses, as that is the last state-available permit, will likely come to the committee in September on, in October. Per the council, Councilmember Larry Carr's request, we're going to be coming in September, October, with a discussion for possibly adding additional storefront dispensaries, and then our hope is to take a little bit of break, and then in the early part of 2019, return to the policy committee for discussions of adding, allowing future events to take place at Cal Expo, as well as a discussion for onsite consumption. I'd like to thank all of the staff, including Zar, Christine, Carl Simpson, Deputy Chief Paletta, Steven DeGocky, and all the city attorney's office, as well as Brad Ross and Joy Patterson, Jason Lee. It takes a big group of people to make cannabis function properly in our city, and I'm very grateful to have the chance to work with all of them. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you. I want to compliment you on a very thorough presentation and an organized presentation that, you know, went through all the elements. I think that was important, but let's, you have a lot of public testimony, I don't have any, I'll get up, let's hear from the public on this item. How many do we have?
I have three speakers on item number one. Felix Lau.
Felix Liu.
Liu. Josiah Young, and then Michael Voy.
Felix, Liu, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and all of the council members. I'm here representing myself and my team, representing a number of all the businessmen and women who want to comply and legally into the canopy market business. However, we've been buying the property, the first project in Del Paso Boulevard, and been turned down the first round. You know, the city had an issue with that frontage, so not allowed to have a cultivation on the boulevard. So, we continue to buy another property in the same area, District 3, too. We have a little problem, but we want to help, act the city to help the submitting out that application process. We've been being almost two years already. So, we have a little issue with that planning department on the project on Santa Ana Avenue.
Okay. I wonder if we could have Mr. Devlin and his team talk to you about the timeframe and where you are in the queue and what the story is. Joe?
Happy to do that. I'm not familiar with the specifics of the particular project, but we will absolutely...
Felix, Mr. Felix...
The project addressed at 1552, I think that project been turned out for the first owner.
Okay. Felix, let me ask you, we cannot resolve this necessarily in the public session, but what I can commit to you is that we will direct Mr. Devlin, through the city manager, to meet with you and your team, and to, in good faith, try to resolve your issues and to make your effort a success here, if we can.
Mr. Mayor, that first group, I just purchased from the first group of people. We not represent that group of people, and me, you know, I'm live here for 40 years. I'm a businessman.
I will add my staff, my top staff, to the meeting as well, so that I can be fully briefed and informed. I can't solve it right here, Felix.
Yeah, we willing to work with every group, you know, in the city and the city government, and the surrounding community group, and the business surrounding that. Our group will represent, you know, we willing to work with the city, but we here ask the city to help us.
Well, again, all I can do, in good faith, is try to step in my office, the leader of the effort here, to sit down with you and try to work it out. We need to move to the next speaker here, sir.
And also, especially for our customer here, Alan Warren.
Mr. Warren's district, so maybe we'll include Mr. Warren here, too.
We need your help. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor and all of the council. Thank you.
I have three more speakers for this item. I do want to remind folks, you do have two minutes for each speaker. Josiah Young, then Michael Voy, then Darrell Roberts.
Young, welcome, sir.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for recognizing me, members of the council, members of the public. My name is Josiah Young. I'm of the Sacramento Law Firm, Churchwell White, appearing here today on behalf of Council Member Warren in his personal capacity. Councilmember Warren has retained our firm to take action on his major concerns around the mitigation of the community impacts based on the effects of the current cannabis regulatory policies. We know empirically that there are impacts on the community, but we've yet to see any mitigation. Meanwhile, we're getting further along with the permitting businesses, and they're now operating and from whom the city is collecting revenues. I'm talking about that 1% fee that the mayor opened up with. I read in newspapers saying that the city has dragged its feet on the equity program, and arguably, the same could be happening here for the allegation of those impact fee revenues. I read a city memo from November 2017 citing February of this year as when the nexus study would be completed. As of today, it's not, and thank you, Mr. Devlin, for sharing that it will be coming soon. I speak for myself in saying that it's a positive step to appear to launch the equity program, the core program, today, but for the very same reason, equity and inclusion are necessary to remedially right the wrongs of the past. Those community members who are not participants in the cannabis industry must also be protected from the effects of the development of the newly regulated industry. So, we look forward to continuing engagement with the city officials, the city attorney, to keep a watchful eye on the return of the study, and we are prepared to take the available steps to ensure that there's true mitigation of the impacts on the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Michael Voy and Darrell Roberts. Michael Voy and then Darrell Roberts.
Afternoon, Mayor, council members. For this portion of the cannabis workshop, I want to say this. Corrections of past problems that really relate to the criminal justice system, not necessarily cannabis, should not be, you can't try to, it's wrong to try to correct that through enabling in cannabis, and I'll have more to say on that in the core issue. Do not confuse and mix an ineffective and biased criminal justice system with the legality or the illegality of cannabis itself. Okay? Now, that said, I would make one, another comment. Other jurisdictions that have had problems, I saw something in the paper the other day about Nevada and their luck with this, that the school systems were having all kinds of problems with it. And with respect to, and I've seen the educational program, and that's a good thing, Joe, that we have that, but I would remind people that it's known, youth pay more attention to what adults do than what they say. In this section, that's pretty much what I have to say, but I'll have more to say in the core section.
Thank you for coming tonight. Thank you, sir.
Next, the last speaker is Darrell Roberts on this item. Okay, then I have no more speakers.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's open the workshop portion of today's hearing to the members of the city council. Anybody? I know I have a question, but I want to defer first to my colleagues. Go ahead. Councilman Chenier?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to be brief, because I've been living this for the last 12 months or maybe two years. So, I am, I'm happy to come back if there are other questions, but I just want to thank the staff. I think this was a really comprehensive look at a very complicated subject that we've been working on. And, Mr. Mayor, I know that your goal in doing this was to try to get all the pieces in the same place so people can look at the program as a whole, and I think we did that. I would just remind the council that we have, I don't want to say we've made this up as we've gone along, but more or less, we are creating a program that there's no model for in the state of California, and really in other states, because our laws are different, and that I think we're pretty close to having it right. There will be other pieces that will come before us as we go forward, and I would look forward to, not in any bad way or good way, but we will look forward to tweaking this as it evolves and as we learn from what we do and from any mistakes we might make and what, and from the successes that we had, and that we will have as we go forward. I do want to go back for a second for, you know, for me, this was about public safety. It was about health of the community and revenues for the city, and I think that we are hitting all of those marks, and I think if we can continue to focus on those three things as we go forward, we'll be successful with this. So, just again, want to thank Mr. Devlin and Zar and the whole staff, and I know that when you look at the business operating permits, I think this encompasses every department we have in the city, and most of our city employees are touching this in one way or another, or quite a few of them from the department. So, I just want to show my appreciation for doing that. Again, it's because we've never done this before. It's unique, and I do believe that we are a leader in this in the state. There are some things that have taken longer than we thought they would, and we'll talk about the equity program, but I think that a lot of that delay is really because we've wanted to get it right, because it is a first for doing it. So, I hope people can appreciate that.
Very good. Thank you for all of your tireless work on these sets of issues, too. Jay, you worked very hard on it. Councilmember Geta, same to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to thank the staff and, you know, every, from every different level, for planning, for code, from our enforcement staff, and what I would also, I think one of the staff that rarely get any attention is our folks that are out on the street, often with our officers and our code officers, and so I would like to, you know, recognize, you know, Ben Rollinson, who's been out there alone for a while, and now he's got a great supervisor, Kiana Savage, who is out there being active, working with the community on addressing some of the illegal grow houses that have been happening, particularly, I know in the Glen Elder community, I received a lot of calls from some of the neighbors out there about some of that. And so, I think, you know, having, ensuring that we have our staff working directly with the neighbors, working directly with residents out there, that's been critical. I do want to thank, you know, Joe and Zar. If you could, Joe, if you could put that map up of the code policy up again, that breaks down like the true what it takes to actually get into business, the BOP, to get to the BOP, to get to the point where you're actually paying the taxes. I think this, it illustrates the work that's been done over the last, there you go, the work that's been done to try to actually get a, an industry that has never been regulated before into something that's safe and something that is manageable, and something that is, that those who live around it are going to feel comfortable with it, because many of the communities who've had the, you know, illegal grow houses that have led to even some cases, fires from the honey oil explosions and other, you know, activities, these are also near some of those areas, too, because they're around industrial corridors. But the fact that we have this checks and balances gives a lot of security that we have quality operators, quality industry in our city, and that we're setting the standard for what a good operator is. Now, this example, though, also shows how, if you're trying to get into the business, it's going to be difficult if you don't have your own land use attorney, if you don't have your own capital, if you don't have all of the resources. So, I think something that, you know, Councilmember Chenier and I have been trying to push pretty quickly and trying to work with our stakeholders, and I think both of us, many of us here wanted to get this core program going sooner than later, is to get it off the ground so we can get resources, so we can reduce the permit fees, so that we can get folks who can help, those who don't have land use attorneys or are experts, to manage through this process so that they also become quality operators who are going on and controlling their own destiny. With that, I just, again, I want to thank everyone for their good work. I think we have struck, you know, a good balance there on some of these policies. In my district, I know there's still a lot more work that we're working on, and I have a feeling that we're going to be reviewing these every year to making sure that we're making changes that tighten up everything, to make it better, and sometimes if they're overly burdensome, we're also going to try to figure out how to make it realistic, too. So, with that, I just want to thank everyone, the community, all the partners out there, all the neighbors who've come to the meetings in my district, and also from the industry for working on this. Lastly, Mr. Mayor, this morning, I know the, there were some members from the community, from Stockton Boulevard, and the cultivators who had a conversation, and everyone's coming to the realization that this is a legal industry now, and how do they look at local hire? How do they look at hiring folks from some of our nonprofits that are looking for employment? And how do we hire directly in the neighborhoods where some of the, where the industry is growing, and the commitment from the industry to do that? And I think that's a very positive move forward, but it's only happened with this time and communication. And I'll be here to answer more questions, too.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Geta, and Councilmember Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, let me say to city staff, I think we've made some progress. I know that, as Mr. Chenier said, this is a work in progress, and we will continue to try to build on the infrastructure that we've laid. You know, in some ways, I still feel like we've not really made the commitments to some of the things that I think are very important to particularly sensitive communities, communities with high concentrations of poor people and minorities, that be it as it may, I'm still hopeful that we're going to get there. it may, I'm still hopeful that we're going to get there. I have several questions, though, that maybe will help me understand where we are relative to to some of the concerns I have. One is, you know, we—the this industry is still a new industry, it's a burgeoning industry. We have a number of operators that have operated for a period of time now. We've—some months ago, we were issued an audit. There were findings in that audit. I've not heard how we've responded, how the—the folks that were audited responded to the audit, and maybe there is some more information that you could—you could share with with the council and members of the public here, just about kind of where that audit, when we heard about it, the findings, and then what was the result of of the findings?
Yes, thank you, council member. I think overall, you know, and I didn't see Jorge here, but—correct me if I get anything wrong here. Come on up and answer anything. I think overall, there there's a number of findings that—in that audit that really showed that we had not put in the 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 processes and inadequate staffing to to manage this. I think we did a a pretty good job of 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 kind of getting up and running and collecting those taxes and—but we didn't get into the details of of managing cannabis really until until 2017. I I think that we've made significant progress towards addressing most, if not all, of the findings in in the audit, and we're working now very closely with the city auditor's office to really work through that punch list and and adopt them as it relates to like things like enforcement. You know, we—we weren't doing regular inspections of of dispensaries, for example. We're now doing monthly inspections. We're now using checklists to ensure compliance. We weren't—it—we weren't being very thorough at the time of renewal of of permit applications to make sure that all of the financial documents were there. We've now put in processes and and controls to ensure that all of the necessary financial documents are there at the time of of permit renewal. We're also looking to really restructure how we go about and and do our own internal audits. We've been using Muni Services as as an audit to go out and audit dispensary finances. Where we hope to go to and where we're going to be working with the city auditor's office to 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 get their input on is how do we get to a risk-based audit system that doesn't look at just the financials of a dispensary, but looks at the totality of that dispensary? So really, a compliance audit that includes financials, that gets to be ultimately risk-based because we're going to have more than 30 cannabis businesses to audit. So we're going to have to continue to improve those processes, and I think we're making significant progress towards that.
So so just so I'm clear, so there were findings, and those findings have been responded to adequately based on your assessment?
It's—it's absolutely a work in progress. Perhaps the city auditor would like to come out and comment as to like where he sees our 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 current progress. I think that would maybe be most fair.
And what—I think what we—what at least what I've been used to and what I've heard is that when the city auditor has a report, there's findings, and then typically the person or entities that were audited will come back and say, "We agree with the audit, and here's what we're going to do about it." So we—you know, they're taking the necessary steps, or they disagree, and they'll disagree, and they'll say, "We disagree for this reason." So, yeah, maybe our city auditor can help clarify.
Yeah, we actually just sent that.
Howard, as a city manager, has a comment here.
Councilman Warren, so yes, you're absolutely right. So as a part of the audits that Jorge and his team perform on all the city departments, there's a quarterly update on the status of the recommendations from the audit, and I think Jorge can speak to this, whether it's initiated, you know, in progress and completed. And so there's a checklist that we go through every quarter.
So as part of our—Jorge is a Sacramento city auditor. As part of our process after we've completed an audit, every six months, we'll return to the council and indicate to the council whether or not we believe that steps have been taken that are adequate to address the areas that were identified in the audit that needed to be addressed. We are at the conclusion of the period from January to July of 2018, and we are working with the department to work through what it is that the department has accomplished towards implementing those recommendations, documenting that, and where needed, conducting some testing to verify that the solutions and the changes that are being reported to us from the department are adequate to address the areas of need. And so at the conclusion of our testing, which we are anticipating will be completed within the next couple of weeks, we'll be able to put together a report that we'll bring back to council that will detail for all of the recommendations that were made, where the department is in terms of implementation, and what additional steps we believe are needed in order to fully address the areas that were reported out in the report. If there are additional areas of concern that the council makes as a result of presenting that information to council, then we can adjust expectations for the next reporting period, which would be from July of 2018 to December of 2018.
Okay, thank you. So the—the were there any challenges to the audit? And when you presented it to the the companies or businesses that were audited, or even the city departments? So you had your findings. Did anyone challenge the findings that you presented?
In terms of dispensaries, communities, departments?
Yeah, across the board.
I think with all of our audits, there are definitely challenges that that we encounter and some some pushback that we receive. And so as part of a normal audit process, yes, we we experience some pushback.
And so how do you reconcile that? Do you—I mean, sometimes you give, sometimes the other side gives, or there's some compromise?
Uh, yeah, well, we try to be as cooperative and collaborative as we can with both the city departments and the entities that we're auditing. And so we'll work with the entity that we're auditing to listen to, you know, what kind of arguments are being made and why they believe that maybe we should consider things a little bit differently. And if that is persuasive enough, then we will modify the report to incorporate that perspective. The other piece that we always ensure is included in our reports is the ability of the entity that is being audited to respond in writing, using their own words, and incorporate that into the audit. So not only do we try to use language in the report that we feel, you know, is fair and accurately reflects the situation that we're auditing, but we provide the opportunity for the department in writing to respond, and that was included in the report. That's the basis of our recommendation follow-up process, so we work off of that and continue to build on it until we reach full implementation.
Okay, very good. And your your update will be coming out when?
So we're doing the testing right now, so we're—we probably will finish our testing in August, and we would hope to present our report. The first audit committee would be in the beginning of September, so I don't think we'd make that. So unless we have a special meeting, it would probably be September or October.
Okay, all right, very good. And Joe, you had—you had mentioned that, you know, early on, there was a little bit of challenges with city staff because of either staffing or, you know, monitoring the current dispensaries and and other related businesses in the marijuana industry. So there was some, you know, working out the details, the kinks within the city structure. Are you comfortable that you have the staffing and the resources to to really take care of the kinds of issues that you've run into, you know, previously that you you had mentioned earlier?
Yeah, thank you. So just really quickly, just one final comment on the audit. I think ultimately, we have the same goals as the city auditor's office as it relates to to cannabis, and so we're going to be working with them to hopefully meet all of those. I think initially, we were using really the wrong tool, if you will, for cannabis regulation. We've since switched to using code officers that are now dedicated. We're providing them with, you know, some training, albeit a lot of it's happening on the job, but we're working with them every day to expand their knowledge base around how to do their job better and and how the industry works. And I think that has been a great—a great improvement as to what we have. We have built into the staffing model additional code officers that can come on board, provided that revenues—permit revenues do do support that. I think where we are at right now, we have adequate code officers to do the inspections for the businesses that we have. We're going to have to continuously evaluate that as the number of permits comes online and and monitor exactly how much time we're spending there and really kind of what—how much it really takes to get in there. But I think right now, we do have that. I'd say one of the maybe unforeseen challenges that wasn't built in the staffing model was the administration of the code appeal hearings. So those 216 citations that we've issued for illegal residential grows, believe it or not, many people appeal that admin penalty that can be in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. And that process is very laborious. It is—it takes up an entire FTE to administer those hearings. That was a bit of an unforeseen item, and we're going to have to continue to, I think, just kind of monitor it.
Any other questions?
I do. Yeah, I have several more.
One more.
The—um, and thank you for that, too. It sounds like you're making progress in terms of how we administer the situation. There is—you had made a—in your presentation, there was the—for small manufacturers. And you—I'm sure you were aware that I had an issue with the ability to to really monitor approvals in council districts like mine where, you know, you have some very sensitive and nuanced kind of situations in different parts of the community. And I was very concerned with the no call-up provision for the CUP. And so I see that that's still being proposed, that there's no call-up. But but then I—I saw and heard you say that for a particular business license, there is a C—there is a call-up provision. And I want to know why the distinction between the—the permit for the either manufacturer or dispensary for marijuana, and yet you have some call-up provision for—or you're proposing some call-up provision for the business license? You know, I mean, what—why the separation between the two?
Yeah, and I'm sorry for, I think, any confusion around this. So just to be clear, any cannabis business that that isn't required to obtain a conditional use permit, their business operating permit is subject to council call-up.
I—I know, I get that. I'm just saying why, though.
Yeah, well, I believe it was really for some of the—really for for some some businesses such as small manufacturers, which is one of the lower barriers to entry into this into this marketplace, obtain a conditional use permit is a very expensive proposition. And if you have gross receipts of less than $100,000, your CUP costs are probably going to be 30% to 50% of your of of one year's annual gross revenue. And so the thought was, I believe, an attempt to lower that barrier to entry. If if any of those businesses then, you know, kind of grow out of that, they're going to have to go forward and obtain a conditional use permit if they want to to continue. But I think it was an attempt to lower the barrier barriers to entry for this.
And so the—the license being called up, they could still be turned down for the use that they want?
Correct.
Okay, I'm—I'm okay. So I'm—I'm a little confused just by if somebody—they get their the one permit to do marijuana, but you could call up the business license and then stop them from opening in a particular location if if that was the council's will?
Yeah, well, again, I think it was to ensure that the council had oversight as to the appropriateness of a particular cannabis business with within their district while allowing a lower barrier to entry for a less costly path, I guess, for that business to to start up, again, while still still ensuring that there is an appropriateness to that particular location.
Okay, all right. All right, my last question is this—well, actually, my last two, and I'll try to make them brief. One is relative to impacts. I know that, you know, this is—you know, the the Nexus study that's ongoing is to determine community impacts and such, and we've gotten a number of 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 issues relative to some of the impacts that are being experienced in the community. And my my sense is that—or let me just say, my hope is that these impacts will be included, you know, as impacts in the Nexus study when it comes out, and then there will be some correlation to whatever the fee is that that the city's charging. Right now, we're charging a 1% fee. And, you know, without really understanding what the impacts are. And my overriding concern is just putting additional burden on sensitive and communities that don't have the ability to pull themselves out of, you know, these generational or or decade-long depressive-type states. And so if we continue to burden these communities with impacts without the resources to to lift themselves up, I—I think, you know, we would be and I would be doing a disservice to these communities. And so, you know, I could share a couple of the impacts that I'm aware of right now, but, you know, I don't know that there's really the will of the council to really hear that. And I know people want to move on with this core program, which I think is a positive step forward. The core program, I think, is a net positive. But I think, you know, as important as the core is, there's still the impacts and the burdens that people that are not in the marijuana industry. And and there will be some reconciliation that needs to happen for communities at large. And so last last question for you, Joe, is this. The 1% fee, there's this—the community plan that could be put together for a particular community, and my understanding, it was, you know, as it—as the ordinance exists now, it's either or. They could pay the 1% or they could provide a plan that would essentially replace the 1%. Are people being encouraged to just pay the 1% as opposed to coming up with a, you know, with a with a plan that would, you know, do more specific things for neighborhoods and communities as opposed to paying a 1% to the city? And then that money is spent somewhere that really is not addressing the community concerns that are taking place?
I—I don't believe that anyone is being encouraged to take one one path or the other, and perhaps Mr. Itagaki can can come up if if need be. But I don't believe anyone's being encouraged to take one path or the other. My understanding of it is if 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 the, you know, the other path of develop a alternative to the 1%, whatever that alternative program is, still needs to—still would need to meet the—would still need to satisfy the 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 elements identified and impacts identified within the the Nexus study. And so one is—I think the—as I could just maybe describe it as 1% and and, you know, we, the city, will 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 go towards—we'll use those funds to mitigate those issues for you, or path B is mitigate those issues yourselves, but they still are going to have to fall within the construct of the the neighborhood responsibility plan and and perhaps have some limitations to them.
So so we've come up with a plan to mitigate neighborhood issues with this 1%?
Well, that is the—I think—
My understanding was that that money was coming in, it was primarily going to code or something like that.
Well, it's going to—that is, I think, the 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 central part of of the Nexus study and what it is look—it is is set to evaluate. What are what are those impacts and how they might be mitigated?
Okay, okay. All right, so then my last comment or question would just be this ancillary business issue. And and if we've defined what ancillary business is, you know, really—how is that interpreted? And if not, then maybe I have some language that can be used to incorporate.
May I on this? I know this relates to the core program in a few moments, and in talking to the advocates, I was going to make a motion at the appropriate time that we eliminate the nonessential language from— that we eliminate the nonessential language from ancillary services so that it isn't as restrictive as the current language currently reads. But we were going to get to that in the next item, item three.
So the ancillary business could be picked up on the next item?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you, Joe.
But thank you very much. Councilman Carr.
Thank you, Mayor. It's a complicated process. And first of all, I want to thank the mayor for even having this workshop so we could pull all of this together in one place. And, Joe, you guys have been working with both the industry as well as people in the community to try to put a program together. And I know they've been pulling you both ways. And to get something that almost everyone can agree on is a Herculean task. I sit here with a bunch of questions and as you were making your presentation, systematically checked them off. You answered my questions and the program answers my primary concern that a council member be able to weigh in on any cannabis industry in their district and get an opportunity to try to convince the other council members to reject it if they feel it's not good for their district. And you found a way to do that while not putting a costly burden on some businesses that may, it may have been a barrier to entry into the business. So I think you threaded this needle, and I was especially pleased with the future items that are coming before council, that those issues that we have raised will be addressed and when they will be addressed. And I'd like to thank the members of the community, Malachi and all the people who've been working on this, looking around the state and looking at other states, how they've put their program together, to make sure that we have an equity program for our area as well. So thank all you guys. And I want to weigh in with Eric's, what Councilmember McGarrett said. The enforcement team is making a dent. Two houses across the street from my house have been cleaned out in the last two weeks. So I appreciate those guys. It's tough work for them, too. They're going into very hostile environments, both environmentally and sometimes with people. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good, thank you. I just have one sort of question that hasn't really been focused on. I know we could spend a lot of time on this, maybe I can get to sort of a brief answer. We can continue till later. But I know when it comes to the business operating permit revenue, that in the early stages, the revenue is less than the expense. And so as we continue to build the permit revenue, we're going to have to use some of that money to address the expenses that have already been incurred. I understand that. But what I would like, and maybe it's from Ms. Holm, our budget director for Mr. Devlin, is a little bit of a current update on our tax revenue as a result of the businesses that we have already permitted and what might be projected in, say, the next year or two that is either already accounted for in the projected budget or in the budget we just passed or is not accounted for in the budget. Want to do that now or it's okay? Maybe we can come back to it at the very end. How about that? Okay?
I would just remind you that we did, this year, we did collect nearly $6 million in business operations tax revenue, which was up a little bit over projections, but beyond that-
That was up over the projections, but we're still going to have to float some of it for 2019, correct?
Correct.
So that's all fine. That's part of starting a new industry year. But I would, I want to keep very good track on the actual tax revenue as well. Jay, you got to come in on that?
So just to go backwards a little bit, I think when we start, when we did the budget for the current year, we were at about 4.7 million in a projection for what we get, would get from cannabis revenues.
In this budget year?
What are we, no, in last budget year? Eighteen.
Eighteen, okay.
That rose to about $6 million or so with a little bit of manufacturing money and a little bit of additional dispensary money. And it's interesting because the medical dispensary money went down, but the recreational more than covered for that deal. But the $6 million that Mr. Devlin referred to accounts for almost none of the, well, you only saw that three business operating permits have been given out. So the 200 or so operations that are in process and in progress, there's no tax revenues from those at this point, except for a couple of people, very small, that are paying even though they're not really official yet. So we, I think, we've just scratched the surface of non-dispensary dollars that we will be getting. Remember that, we've talked about this before, we think the delivery services were probably accounting for about a third of the dispensary dollars that we were losing because there was no taxing on it. So once we do the non-storefront deliveries, once we really get the manufacturers up and running and the cultivators up and running, you're going to see a lot more. It's obviously really difficult to figure out how much because it's going to depend on how they grow and all of those items. But I think it will be significantly more than what we're seeing now. And I know that Dawn and Laney will never admit to that, but she's shaking her head, yes. I mean, we have just, we've done almost nothing in revenue off of all the work we've done in the last year. The revenues we're seeing really are still from the dispensaries that we set up many years ago and from a little bit of addition of recreational. So we've got a long way to go on revenues, all positive.
Obviously, key question, and, you know, I don't want to get into the whole Measure U business here from the dais, but, you know, we want to invest that money. And I tend to argue that we should be investing the lion's share of that money, at least the second half of it, in economic development. And so, you know, when it comes to budget deficits and all that, growth of this city will address some of it. But I'm also hoping that the cannabis revenue is in part going to be an answer to some of the other budget challenges we have. And so I know we're just starting, but want to keep coming back to that question because it's one of the pillars, not the only by any means, but one of the pillars of, or the revenue tools we have in order to address our current and future obligations.
Right, and what you didn't say, which I know you were thinking, was around the inclusive economic development in the neighborhood corridors, which is where we want to be able to invest these dollars.
Measure U dollars.
And I would hope, and some of these dollars as well.
Well, I was going to get to that in the core, I was going to get to that when we got to core. That's the whole purpose here. Okay, Eric?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, one, I think, first, I want to thank this council, but also, you know, just give a little refresher for the public that we took a progressive action in our last budget and by front-loading the costs of the two things that we heard from the community, which was we need more enforcement in what's happening within the neighborhoods about the illegal activity and for folks living adjacent to some of these illegal growhouses. And then also front-loading and paying for the core program. And I do want to thank Councilmember Harris because he was very, you know, I think, vocal about being frugal in how we expend dollars when we still haven't seen the revenue on this. Because the conditional use permit fees are the ones that are going to suppose to, are supposed to pay for the operations cost. And having read the piles of applications that are happening, at least in my district, we can see that those fees will start to come in to cover those costs. But again, I think the commitment from this council was progressive in saying, we need to immediately look at funding the equity program and also the quality of life needs, that we need to do that. And that's, I think, our next item is what we're going to vote on to put that money to use.
Let's get to that then. Okay, thank you very much. Let's get to the next item, which we're going to skip item two for now because most of the public is here for item three. And this is the core program, long awaited. And let's see if we can run through the details relatively quickly. We have 36 people signed up to speak. And maybe what we will do, especially if you're here in support of the core program, is ask people to take one minute instead of two and just come up and state your name and your support. You can, you know, you can speak longer if you want. I mean, I'm just trying to figure out a way that we can, we can get to a yes vote sooner rather than later.
Good afternoon again, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I covered a lot of this in the workshop, so please let me know if I'm going too quickly. The recommendation before you is to pass a motion to-
We have to waive the rules. Don't go through that, okay?
Exactly, thank you, sir. So what is, what is the core program? Bottom line is, we need a two-thirds vote. So this program at its core, pun intended, is intended to help individuals that have been impacted by the criminalization of cannabis, either start a cannabis business or transition to existing cannabis business that they may have into that legal infrastructure. It's a two-year pilot program, and the council's committed a total of $1 million to fund this program over that two years. There are two primary eligibility criteria classifications. One, again, having been arrested for a cannabis arrest or a family member, having been arrested for cannabis-related crime, or a resident of the city of Sacramento in one of the ZIP codes that had a disproportionate number of cannabis-related arrests relative to the overall population of the city. There's also classifications and billies for participation of businesses owned by persons that meet that Class 1 and Class 2 criteria, as well as private businesses that wish to host or incubate a core program participant as well. Some of the benefits, so if the council adopts this today, we will be going out with a request for proposals to select a vendor to administer what I would describe or categorize as a small business support center. This is somewhere where someone can go and help getting that business advice, mentoring, help forming an LLC, whatever it is, whatever the supports and services relative to the successful operation of a small business, that they can go there and obtain that help there. Some of the other benefits would, are a $0 permit fee, so we're going to be essentially waiving their business operating permit fee, priority processing of their BOP and their conditional use permit, that's not up there. As well as, it also, again, meets the, satisfies the neighborhood responsibility requirement. Also, as part of this program, should the city reissue any existing storefront dispensary permits or creates any new storefront dispensary permit, core participants would have priority position for those. If the council adopts the program, our next step would be to release the request for proposals. That RFP is done and is ready to go. That could be released as early as next week. We will then select a vendor through that RFP process and then come back to council for the award of the contract. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or-
Sorry, thank you very much. Joe, I want to get right to the public testimony, all right? I want to hear from the public on this item. Again, you have up to two minutes. I would ask people if you're just here specially in support to state your name and organization and that you're in support, and let's move to the next speaker, except for this first gentleman. Go ahead.
Would you like to?
It is two minutes, but I'm asking people if they can try to keep it to one, except for this gentleman.
First speaker is Malachi Seku Amin, then Tiffany Watkins, and Michael Voy.
Okay. Malachi, first of all, I want to just state thank you, to you, and Brenda and everybody else who have worked so hard on getting us to this point. Now, I know it, sometimes it has been difficult, but you have hung in there, and more than hung in there, you have advocated in really a very high level and quality way and never gave up and have been reasonable and tough at the same time. And glad we're to this point, and that doesn't count against your two minutes, so there, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm Malachi Amin, president of the California Urban Partnership, as well as a representative of Build Black. Mr. Mayor, I just would like to return the kudos and let you know that your leadership is deeply appreciated. This core program is going to help those who were disproportionately impacted by the war on drugs. It will help us who have suffered generational poverty to benefit from the region's $4 billion industry in cannabis. And we know about the study and who was impacted. We know that the majority of those who were impacted were African-American disproportionately. We know that, on the average, from a national picture, 60% to 70% of marijuana-related arrests, nonviolent marijuana-related arrests and jail sentences, are comprised of African-Americans, even though whites smoke more weed and actually benefit financially more from selling weed, right? So this has caused economic destruction, trauma in our community, and thank you for listening. Thank you so much for listening. There are families, children, neighborhoods impacted, and I certainly am very sensitive to Councilmember Alan Warren in terms of addressing impacts. The proposal reflects negotiations that we've had over the past year and a half. We've learned a lot about what it means to create an inclusive and equitable economy here in Sacramento. I'd suggest that we apply these lessons to all future economic development in the city. Mayor Steinberg, you have some exciting ideas about how we can create jobs and build an inclusive economy through the reauthorization of Measure U. I support that vision, and I am ready to work with you to apply what we've learned from our work on cannabis policy to economic development going forward. These are groundbreaking ideas, and I want to thank you and thank all of the city council members for your leadership. Jay Shaner, you're fantastic, bro. All of you, I want to thank you. Jay Shaner grabbed the bull by the horns in the beginning, so I can't fail to recognize him. But I thank all of you for your vote to make this happen last November 28th, and now we have some meat on the bones. And we're looking forward to hopefully a yes vote from all of you. Mr. Mayor, I know I'm over my time, but I just wanted to support you and ask those who did come to support us, if they could raise their hands. And then also, if, after the first 10 or 15 speakers, if you guys could just come up and just say you support, and then we can get to the vote faster.
Or even the first four or five speakers. But thank you, but thank you. Okay.
My next speaker is Tiffany Watkins, Michael Voy, then Brenda Davis, then Dr. Flo Kofur.
Thank you. That's great.
Good afternoon, everyone. I am Tiffany Watkins, and I'm here with the Cal Asian Chamber in support of the core program. Now, the Cal Asian Chamber, they've been very proactive in spreading the, just kind of spreading all across the communities, feeling that this equity program should be for every, every community that's in need. And I'm in total agreeance with that. So we would absolutely adore a yes vote. I'd like to also add that along with an equity program, deeply embedded within that, should be a very strong educational program, both for opposition and for people who are for this, because I think that the more that people can know in regards to what cannabis can do for the state of California, the more we can all be on the same page about ending crime and ending all the things that, all the dark things that come with the cannabis community right now. There's so much light, so much positivity, and so much money to be made, both for us individuals and for the state of California, that I just think we need strong education. So again, in support and along with the Cal Asian Chamber. Thank you.
Very much, appreciate it.
Michael Voy, then Brenda Davis, then Dr. Flo Kofur. Mr. Voy, and if you wouldn't mind lining up in the metal aisle, we'd appreciate it.
Afternoon again. I just want to start with this comment, and I'll debate it with anybody in this chamber today, at any point, at any time. The core program is the most- The Core Program is the most racist thing this council has ever considered. And I'll debate that. Now, that said, they come seeking redemption and equity. And what do they offer in return? Predation, planting the seeds of the next Stefan Clark, the next Joseph Mann, and the city hasn't had enough of those, okay? So, we talk in all these rosy terms about what cannabis does. There's a dark side to cannabis. There are two dead teenagers in this county, whose bodies they haven't even found because of a crime, a murder that was committed over the theft of cannabis, two murders. So, let's not put it, just quit spraying perfume on a pig and telling me it's a French poodle, okay? Now, the next thing that I would say is this. How much inflation has there occurred in the last 2,000 years? When we talk about predation on black-on-black crime, it's all white-on-black now until you approve the cannabis program. Then, people of color are sucked into distributing the poison and the sickness as well as white people. Right now, it's all white, and I'll stand by that. The last thing that I will say is this. 2,000 years ago, you could have achieved what you wanted to achieve for 30 pieces of silver. Now, it costs $500,000 over two years. Thank you.
Voy, thank you.
Next speaker is Brenda Davis, Dr. Flo Kofur, and then Kevin Daniels.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor Steinberg and city council members, I want to say thank you. I learned in law school that if things are looking good and going your way, say thank you and be quiet. But I want to thank the city staff in particular. It's been a slog. We started this in the fourth quarter of 2017, and here we are approaching the fourth quarter of 2018, but it's looking good for finally getting a program launched and getting this thing off the ground, and remembering that the objective is to get the city revenues, to get an inclusive community involved in getting that revenue, those revenue streams, and also especially to reinvesting those revenues in those communities so that what we're saying we're trying to address actually gets done. So, thank you very much, and we hope that you vote yes.
Thank you for your good work, Brenda.
Dr. Flo Kofur, then Kevin Daniels, then Betty Williams.
Dr. Kofur, welcome.
Thank you, mayor, members of the council. I'm here representing public health advocates, and we worked with California Urban Partnership and many of the other partners represented in the room to help bring this to fruition. And so, we are really pleased to hear the support, and we hope that all of you will vote aye. When the voters approved Proposition 64 in November of 2016, they were advocating on behalf of public health. We know that incarcerations, we know that criminalization has a huge impact on health, and we also know that part of the reason that voters thought this was important was to be able to right some past wrongs, especially as it relates to the war on drugs, and the disproportionate impact it's had on communities of color. We think this is not only taking that in that spirit, but advancing it and making sure that the economic opportunities that were opened up by Prop 64 are available to members of the community who were harmed. So, we really want to thank you all for your leadership on this issue, really urge you to vote yes on this ordinance so that we are able to move forward with the Core Program and really begin to right some historic wrongs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin Daniels, Betty Williams, and Keon Houston.
Good afternoon. My name is Kevin Daniel. I'm representing the Greater Sacramento Urban League, and we are in support of the Core Program. No one can deny the effect of war on drugs had on poor communities, especially the black community. We took the brunt of the casualties. Now, here it is, big economic boom because of cannabis, one of the substances that put many people in jail. And regardless of how you feel about cannabis, personally, I'm not into cannabis, but regardless of how you feel about cannabis, you got to be about fairness. And it's not fair that this substance that destroyed many communities of color is now making people in affluent communities rich. There's no fairness there. We got to have some equity. So, equity is a big deal. We need a system in place that's going to help people prepare their system and to get into the industry while still young, and not just as a workforce, but as business owners. We want a big share of the pie and not just jobs. You know, we'll take some jobs, but we make sure we need to be owners. And lastly, I do have a concern about communities like Del Paso Heights. You know, 95838 is not on the list of ZIP codes of the community that was highly affected. You know, and I did speak to Joe, and he was very clear. The study talked about where people were arrested and not where they lived when they were arrested. And I'm born and raised in Del Paso Heights. I can tell you, our community was affected. And I will say, I have been asking questions of people, where were you arrested? And I guess it's true, they were arrested in other places, large public gatherings, events, places where a lot of college students. So, it had a serious effect on our community regardless of where they were arrested. So, I just want to make sure that the city council does take that into consideration, and we got to find some kind of way to address this concern as well.
Next speaker is Betty Williams, Keon Houston, and then Merrill Sanchez.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. My name is Betty Williams. I'm the president of the Greater Sacramento N double A CP. And I also stand here in support of the Core Program. I've been here a year and a half ago when we first launched this and started partnering with Malachi and everyone in the room. The fact that someone mentioned racism, I believe the biggest racism or discrimination was the war on drugs that impacted the communities that was consistently being arrested by African-Americans. That's the true racism that happened. And so, today you have the opportunity to turn that around and to actually vote yes and create the model for the rest of the world, not just Sacramento, and to do the right thing. So, I urge you, I've never spoke this fast before, but I'm trying to adhere to what had been said earlier, but I do urge you and that you would support in making sure that this Core Program happens. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, Betty.
Keon Houston.
Good evening, council. Put my notes up here. My name is Keon Houston. Resident here in Sacramento, California. I'm also a board member of Sacramento Black Chamber of Commerce, also an owner, minority, CEO, and founder of Imminent Extracts here in Sacramento. Been recently permitted, temporarily permitted, thanks to Joe Zohar here. And I want to, you know, go down and say about the Core Program, the Black Chamber supports the Core Program. We urge you guys to vote yes for the Core Program. The economic injustice that the community has brought on war on drugs. And this program is personal to me based on the fact that, you know, I worked two hard, long years putting this together, you know, being from the city, and I can see it affecting and helping other people in the community, family-wise, and not so much as far as the jail, but providing jobs, opportunities, and I'm willing to mentor and help, being that I took the steps necessary to get to where I'm at right now. So, voting yes and creating an opportunity for everybody in the city that's minority, that's been minority affected by this would be highly appreciated. And I'm not too good with speeches, so.
You did great.
Eric, I'm in your district, District 6, by the way. And, you know, like I said, I'm here to support anything that is approved, mentor-wise, consultant-wise, whatever, to help the community and give back.
Thank you so much.
Got you.
Yeah. Thank you to the Black Chamber.
Next speaker is Merrill Sanchez, then Ricky Lewis, then Betty Mitchell.
Sanchez, welcome.
My name is Merrill Sanchez, and I'm from brother to brother. And the first thing I want to say is, I'm one of those people that Kevin was talking about. I was arrested and imprisoned for just having marijuana. This business, I mean, this program will really help people like me because I've been legally in the industry under Prop 215, and then when Prop 64 came, it kind of made it to where you had to get licenses and have a whole bunch of money to be able to be a part of that. And I just want to be a part of this program. The Core Program, I needed to pass, and I, you know, I'm saying it helped me get started in this business from this point. So, I appreciate if you pass it.
Thank you for being so involved in all of this over the many months.
Very welcome.
First Ricky Lewis, then Betty Mitchell, then Mac Worthy. Ricky Lewis?
All right. Good evening, mayor, city council members. Brother Carr, friendship is essential to my soul. I'd like to say that I'm representing Meraki Laboratories. I'd like to start a business, so I'd hope that you guys would vote in favor of this ordinance, getting this Core Program through. It has affected my immediate family, and it has affected my community, and I just pray that, you know, it goes through so that we can have an opportunity to correct the wrongs that have been placed in the past. That's my time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Betty Mitchell, then Mac Worthy, then Chris Logston.
I will read as fast as I can. Hello, my name is Betty, and I was one of the first to apply for CUP and BOP permits in 2000, May 2017. My business was a micro business. My location was sold, and I had to start over, and I did so in August of 2017. From the start, I was excited to create this nonprofit dedicated to contribution and service, and our premium CBD powder was going to be used to support health crises for adults seeking pain management to helping under-resourced families to obtain CBD for children experiencing seizures, neuropathic pain, and other medical issues. By now, I had hoped to be leading my peers in the corporate social responsibilities of cultivators in the city of Sacramento. That was then. Today, I'm still going through the process. I feel like Charlie Sheen at the end of the movie Platoon. The process has been arduous. Recently, I was contacted by a print media. She asked me at the end of the interview, what has kept me going? I replied, "I have a high tolerance for uncertainty. I know the significance and benefits of bringing our product to market, and I'm not afraid of white folks." Because white folks are all I've encountered during the entire decision-making process. The Core Program is needed just for this purpose. The guidance for minority and women vendors would be invaluable. For instance, did you know that most small warehouses don't have enough ampage and votes to carry a cultivation? The minimum to bring in amps from Smud starts at around $20,000. And Smud has the kindest, most gracious gangsters you will ever speak with, because you're going to pay them first. This is why shared cannabis space is critical. Did you know you will need three different engineers, mechanical, electrical, structural, and an architect? And having over 20 years of product development, did you know that all edibles and adjustables need to be formulated using FDA grants and federal trademark and patent standards? Here is what I know for sure, the technical assistance and training that will be offered by the Core Program.
Ms. Mitchell, your two minutes is completely.
Mitchell, your time is up, ma'am. You need to submit the rest of the report to us in writing, please, okay? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Mac Worthy, then Chris Logston.
Good afternoon, panel. I'm still not hearing some real farm language yet. We want to know what you're going to use to grow those plants. We want to know who going to keep the record to the ones that die when they get to your place? Who going to be able to tell you what is a good plant and what is a not-good plant? How many potato slips it takes to grow one acre? A lot of them die. How many tomatoes plants you have to have before you have 12 tomatoes? These are the things that should be up. Now, training for employees, people, if you go free enterprise, that's a no-no. Nobody train your employees with you. When we look at education, people, let's go to the alcohol situation. Nobody said, "We're going to educate you to drink alcohol." I drank Cunyac. I know when I got enough. So, these are the things that ain't brought out here. Then we said choosing your own, why can't you choose your own plant? Why can't you grow your own plant? You got a situation here, it's not showing the money that going to be made. You got a situation that you're not going to get the money that you are saying that it's going to produce. When you saying business care, people, you don't deal with that. You don't need no sin to support your business. If you're in a business producing, you will grow on your own. Reinvestment, that's a no-no. Nobody tells free enterprise where to reinvest your money. This is not socialism, and this is not slavery. Especially black people, wake up. Don't let them run that by you. You have a right to invest in whatever you want to invest in, but the city is not interested in what you're investing in. They're interested in how much money the city going to get. The same lie was told here about the arena. How many people's employed? You're going right back to the same garbage. Tell the people the truth. Free enterprise is what is said, free enterprise and not socialism or dictatorship.
Next speaker is Chris Logston, Pat Fong Kishida, then Frank Louie. Chris here? Not Chris, Pat Fong Kishida, then Frank Louie.
Hi, Pat.
Good afternoon. Pat Fong Kishida, president and CEO of the Sacramento Asian Pacific Chamber of Commerce. It's hardly unusual for police in the Sacramento region to find an illegal marijuana grow house in our communities. As Larry Carr can attest to, in several recent raids, the occupants of these grow houses have turned out to be Chinese immigrants. Make no mistake, these are sophisticated operations run by Chinese Asian gangs that are organized and well-funded. They are in this for profit and are currently being run in the shadow of commercial enterprises. This is a prime example that the black market for marijuana is not going away and is prevalent, particularly in the Asian Pacific Islander community. I want to thank the mayor and councilmember Sheneer for your leadership on these issues, and we are in strong support of the Core Program. The chamber has been working to educate our community and our membership for the past two years, and are very appreciative of Joe and his staff for showing up for every workshop and every outreach activity with many workshops in language, and so Joe had to be translated on many occasions. We are here because we've been meeting for the past year with the African-American community and the Latino community to figure out a collaborative approach to the issues of equity and resources, and we look forward to working with all of you on these issues. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Frank Louie, then Lynette Davies, then Joshua Jenkins. Frank Louie, then Lynette Davies, then Joshua Jenkins. Mr. Louie?
Hi, I'm Frank Lou with the Cal Asian Chamber and Sacramento Asian Chamber. We're in support of the Core Program. I'm here to share some comments on the war on drugs in the API community. Recent arrests for illegal cannabis activity, including a lot of members of the API community, including many, include many immigrants. Many in this community are living and working in low-income neighborhoods and are seeking new employment and business opportunities in emerging growth industries, and many have also been impacted by the past war on drugs. There are unique cultural challenges in working with the many API communities, and this work needs to continue, especially in the emerging cannabis space. The Sac Asian Chamber has taken a proactive approach with respect to the emerging cannabis industry and has held many educational workshops, is trying to host missions to other cities to learn from, and certainly try to provide appropriate business assistance to various segments of the API community. We need to continue to address the challenges, obstacles, and barriers in this community. It would be a mistake to ignore the second war on drugs with respect to the API community. The city needs to make sure that we put programs in place to address the unique cultural challenges presented by the API communities, if we want to reduce the number of illegal businesses that are currently operating, protect the illegal operators, and to encourage these folks to become part of the legal, regulated economy, which will protect consumers from untested product and help increase tax revenues. This is an opportunity to leverage the new industry, a new industry, and to create opportunities for employment and investment in our most challenging communities in Sacramento. Thank you very much, and we're in support of Core.
Thank you very much, Frank. Appreciate it.
Lynette Davies?
Davies, welcome.
Hello, I'm Lynette Davies, and the owner of Cana Care here in the city of Sacramento. And we are definitely in support of having a Core Program for the city of Sacramento. However, what we have proposed isn't going to be enough. It is one thing to educate the people and be able to help them get into a business. However, the cost of getting into this business, even waiving the permit fee, is not going to be enough to get them into this business. They are going to need $100,000 behind them. They honestly are. And if the city of Sacramento is truly want to invest into the public in getting them started, they need to also have some kind of fund that is going to be able to help them get started with the cost of business, because besides the city of Sacramento business, they're going to have workers comp, they're going to have liability. I have put in for a permit here in the city for a relocation permit in February. To date, I don't have... To date, I don't have a date that that permit is going to be finalized, and in May, they closed my business. So I have had to support this entire business at $10,000 a month for 90 days now, and I don't even have a date when I'm going to get back in. Can you imagine being in the core program, knowing all of this, and yet still locked out because we don't have, not provided, funds for people to get into this business? I think it's imperative that if you do part of it, you do it right the whole way, and you help fund these people to get into business. Thank you.
Joshua Jenkins, and then Mel with California Policy Solutions.
Mayor Steinberg, distinguished members of the council. My name is Frank Louie, and I represent the Stockton Boulevard Partnership. I have to constantly remember, remind the other Frank, that I am the older Frank with the gray hair and obviously have a little bit more wisdom. Hold those comments. So I truly understand the rationale with mayor, council, on the implementation of the cannabis equity program. I truly believe that if it's administered properly, that all votes would be, all ethnic groups would be totally inclusive of this process. However, let's not forget that on Stockton Boulevard, we have over 350 ethnic minority businesses, and currently, you know, we're experiencing a lot of challenges. In the next four years, we're going to be seeing rising wages. We've got a crime problem, a prostitution problem, and obviously, an increase in the homeless. So I would really urge this council to also consider assisting businesses that are in compliance, legitimate, in form of maybe exploring possibly an enterprise zone, which Stockton Boulevard, at one time, I believe was in the 1990s, that it was part of the enterprise zone. And what it did was it afforded folks that hire the workforce within the community, possibly payroll tax deduction, along with property tax. So again, Mayor Steinberg, with your leadership, we certainly would want you to visit at some point. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Next speaker is Joshua Jenkins, then Mel, then Stephanie Nguyen.
Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Joshua Jenkins. I come with, from Lowell Penguin Incorporated. We're a small business trying to get started up in this city. I have fought for and tried to advocate for veterans' rights to be expanded in the community, specifically in regards to the cannabis industry. The core program used to include women, veterans, and other minority groups, and it is truly a sad day that those minority groups have been removed from this program. These groups have been told that they will be included in this program since September by city officials, and have placed reasonable reliance with their businesses and tens of thousands of dollars at stake. This program has the opportunity to truly help disadvantaged individuals and communities to take advantage of this brand-new and shining industry, which is growing every day. I would also like to draw attention to the definition of ancillary within the core program. Ancillary means providing necessary support to the primary activities or operation of an organization, and Google could tell you that. But in ancillary, in your definition of ancillary businesses, it is non-essential operations, support operations of a business. This is the exact opposite, and you're placing businesses like mine, that sell devices, cartridges, and batteries, to the cannabis industry to support the essential necessity of their manufacturing businesses and retail businesses to stay open with other lines of revenue. You're placing my business not in that scope, and that's, that's not the intent of any of it with the definition of ancillary. So going back to the veterans, include veterans in this core program, include women back in the core program, and afford other minority groups an opportunity to be advanced in this industry. Thank you.
Next speaker is Mel, then Stephanie Nguyen.
My name is Mel Osagai. I'm Managing Director of California Policy Solutions. I want to say hello to my friends in the council and the mayor, and all, and thank you all for the good work you've done. I'd like to thank Malachi and Betty Williams, and all the people in the room who've done the work that brought us here today. I'm here speaking today on behalf of my colleague Lauren Hammond, who couldn't be here, but she asked me to come and speak in support of the, of the core program, and which I very enthusiastically do. I think all the questions asked about how it's going to be implemented, whether it's going to be run properly, are all the right questions. So we're hoping for an eye vote, and hope it gets passed. I do want to add something to our thinking about this, though. I don't know how the city plans on determining whether you've been successful. In the past, efforts like this have been measured as good-faith efforts, really trying hard, getting everybody together to make a good push, and really making good effort. I would submit to you that those are business, governmental kinds of ways of thinking about it, but not real ways, right? The real way you think about this is, would you want to be second, finish second in the Super Bowl, right? Would you want to have, wished you had invested in Apple, but you didn't, and you waited to see if that would work out? Or if you finished second in a 100-meter dash? In other words, there are going to be winners or losers. I would submit to you that you should measure your success by the number of businesses that get started and are sustained by this program. And I also think, as the previous speaker suggested, that there needs to be funding. And no, it's not in this program, and we support this program, but perhaps the state, and there's some other ways to provide funding for new businesses. It's just going to cost a lot of money beyond what the fees paid at the city level. So Lauren told me to be a very strong supporter, and I am, but I would ask you to think about how you measure it. If you measure it by the number of businesses that become successful because of this program, that's a real way to measure it.
Thank you, Mel.
If you measure it by good-faith effort, not so good. Thank you for your time.
Need real measurement. Totally agree. Thank you for coming.
Next speaker is Stephanie Nguyen, and then James Sweeney.
Good afternoon, mayor and councilmembers. Thank you. First, I do want to say that we are in support of the core program. My name is Stephanie Nguyen. I'm the Executive Director of Asian Resources and the First Vice Chair of Capital Council of Asian Pacific Islanders Together for Advocacy and Leadership. I think it's okay for me to say that the underground market, the illegal cannabis businesses, is mainly happening in the South Sacramento area, the area in which I grew up, the area in which my parents currently reside in. I think it's also okay for me to say that it's predominantly ran by the Southeast Asian community. And I heard Councilmember Carr say that we're making a dent in going in and busting these homes, but I will also say that as an organization that provides services to the community, I can pretty much tell you when a client comes in knocking on our door and asking those specific questions, where I can probably guess that they were getting recruited to do this work. I can't possibly point it out, but I can also tell you that if you want to ride along with me in South Sacramento, I can pretty much point out which houses are doing these underground illegal cannabis houses. I'm here to tell you that while we're in support of this, and we're looking at communities that are mostly affected by this, don't forget the Asian community, because we are always overlooked when things like this come up. And that I hope that the program that you fund, or the programs that we all put together here as a community, are going to be not only specific to certain communities, but also culturally and linguistically appropriate. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Next speaker is James Sweeney, then Deanna Garcia, then Rashid Siddique.
Mr. Mayor, do we need a time check? How are we going to do this?
Well, so let me just say, we of course have our five o'clock meeting, but I want to complete this item. We do have a lot of young people and their families waiting for us, and I think we want to get right to that as soon as we're done, but we need to finish the item here. Again, I, you know, just ask folks, you can be real brief. I think the council is ready and poised to cast a very important vote here in a favorable way in a few minutes. Like to get to it, please. Sweeney?
First and foremost, I would like to thank the mayor, the council. I'd like to thank Joe. I'm here representing Bay PAC, the Black American Political Association of California, and we clearly and unequivocally support the core program. We think you've done a tremendous job. I also think that as a member of the Cannabis Advisory Board of the State of California, I want you to know that your city, our city, is taking the lead in the nation for putting together an equity program. And everyone across the country will be looking at this program. And it is my hope that people like Malachi, who have helped make this happen, like Betty, and like many of the other organizations, that you have done an outstanding job. Now, that does not mean that there aren't other issues and problems. As Larry Carr indicated, he wanted to take a look at some other dispensaries, because the facts are important here. And if you look at 30 dispensaries, and you ask yourself the question of those 30 dispensaries, how many are black-owned? So facts play an important role, and I know you will address those.
Sure will. Thanks, Mr. Sweeney.
Praise the Lord and pass the biscuits. Vote yes.
Deanna Garcia, then Rashid Siddique.
We'll take the biscuits.
Good evenings. Thank you, city council, mayor, Joe, staff. I just want to ask that we put women back into the core program. Have a good night.
Thank you so much.
Rashid Siddique, then Nikisha Booth Robinson.
Good morning, council, mayor. I want to first thank Malachi for all the hard work that California Urban Partnership has done up to this point. The community thanks you, appreciate you. Now, with the city, I think, Joe, you probably have a hard job right now, and we're trying to assist you and giving you aid, and hoping that we can get to a good place to give opportunities for African-Americans that we've never had here in Sacramento. This kind of feels like a alcohol-tobacco kind of situation, where we may get locked out if we don't get in on the front end. And so this is an opportunity for us, as African-American community, to be inside owning businesses, owning businesses in our neighborhoods, so this cycle of money stays in our neighborhood. We have million-dollar blocks in our neighborhoods, and that million dollars is being earned in the prison systems. So we are asking for that money to come back to our community.
Yes.
So if the mayor, city council can help us to facilitate that, and Councilwoman Warren, I understand that you need a good audit. We need them to have a good system. And we hopefully, we can, with the partnership with California Urban Partnership, we can develop that. Good partnership, community, and businesses, and building black. All right.
Congratulations.
Nikisha Booth Robinson, Aleem Shabaz, then Ryan McClinton.
Is here.
Nikisha, Aleem Sabid Shabaz. Aleem, Ryan McClinton, Keith Allen, Michael Miles, Michael here, Lorraine White, Shaleah Choice, Antovia Stout, Christine Johnson, Ducharme Thomas, Alicia Crockett.
Wait.
Who do we have?
We have a winner.
If you'll state your name, I'd appreciate it.
You rolled too fast, please.
And then Timothy Stewart.
I just want to say I'm in favor. I'm Christine Johnson, and I hope you guys are, too.
Thank you, Christine. Thank you. Excellent.
Alicia Crockett.
Wait, hold on. Let's, go ahead, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. No, no, I'm in. Go ahead. Yes, you're on.
Thank you. My name is Ducharme Thomas, and I support the core program. I do realize that the opportunity for reinvestment is going to help individuals, families, and businesses, is going to create jobs, and so I appreciate your consideration of this and appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Alicia Crockett, Timothy Stewart, Ardell Harrison, Eugene Rodriguez.
Eugene Rodriguez is here.
And then Jamila Johnson.
Jamila Johnson.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Rodriguez. Welcome.
Welcome. Glad to be here. Thank you all for proving this. I'm thanking you in advance.
You haven't done it yet.
I got faith in you. Also, I want to acknowledge Betty Williams, the President of the NAACP, who actually kicked in the door originally, kicked in the door and got this all started. And I'm just grateful for Betty Williams. I'm Ardell Harrison. I'm with the NAACP. I'm the Housing Chair, and I was chosen as the Housing Chair because I understand the underlying everything, and I really appreciate and support the core program. And I'm hoping that we can even look further into it, because the BOP doesn't do anything without a CUP. You have to have a property for the BOP to sit on. And the lady was up here explaining that she was three months in, and $90,000, if you guys understand cap rates in real estate. The average market right now is $2 a square foot. If you've got 10,000 square feet, that's $20,000 a month, times 12, that's $240,000 that you've got to hold before you get a CUP. Average CUP is 11 months, so you do the math. So the money that comes back in, we must be able to allocate for the core program to be able to sustain and hold these properties, because the landlords aren't going to let them be there for free, and they're too expensive. But again, as I end this, you know, the train has already left the station. All we want is a ticket to ride. Thank you.
Thank you.
Was Jamila Johnson here?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. And Jamila, you'll be our last speaker.
Save the best for last. How are you guys doing? My name is Jamila Johnson. I'm known in the industry as Medical Montana. The last four years, I've been focusing more on CBD, and I would like to say I would be in favor of the core program, because somebody like me that's been in this industry out there, I'm not going to say that blacks are being left out, because I've been to events where I've been the only black person there, and they didn't shut me out. So with that said, if you can get it going, let's see where it goes. I know a million dollars is not enough. It's probably not even enough for me to get my business going for two years. So if you guys can get this going, that's good. Let's see if we can get some more money coming in. Maybe some of the money that I help make will go back into the, exactly, you know what I mean? So I can guarantee you right here, looking at everyone in their eyes, that if I was part of this core program, I'd bring a championship home before the Sacramento Kings do.
Well, at least make the playoffs. That is our public testimony. Let's get to the council members. Thank you all very much. Councilmember Sheneer.
Thank you, mayor. I'm going to try to do this in two minutes, because we do have, I think, 88 young people outside waiting to come in to do a presentation today from our Summer at City Hall program. This started with a letter from, I think, 24 organizations. Many of you are in the room today, and pushing hard and advocating for something that's just the right thing to do. I really want to applaud the leadership, Malachi especially. We go back about 22 years, I think, so quite a while, but this is just the right thing to do. It is going to take some work. We're going to learn as we go. I do hope we can be both a statewide and national model. I'm sure, as with all other things cannabis, we will be tweaking this as we think about it and as we really implement this program. So I'm looking forward to doing that. We've talked about this for months, and actually, for a year and a half. So it's the right thing to do. I'm going to move that we do this, and, Mr. Mayor, you have a kind of technical amendment that you want to put in?
Yes. Yeah, the technical amendment is to remove the "non-essential" term from the definition of ancillary in the.
So with that, I want to open and close the public hearing and move the staff recommendation with that amendment.
Good. Seconded by Councilman Carr, Councilman Bagueta.
Well, it's already been seconded, but I just wanted to also thank Malachi. You know, there's been a lot of meetings that we've had over the time, and I also have to thank one of, one of my neighbors. to thank one of, one of my neighbors who, if, if Malachi wasn't around to get me, Jim Katty was there to get me, too, you know? So making sure that they were tag teaming, and, and I do want to thank both of them because they have also helped us on the, to start looking at an expugment program that we're working on right now as well. And so not only on the, on the, on the front end to have, get people some opportunity for the future, but also on the back end, doing the cleanup of the past wrongs, so get that going through. So, okay. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'm ready to vote.
Last, last comment, if I may, very quickly. Okay, I just got to make one last comment. Again, all the thank yous in the world, I mean, this shows what we can do when we, when we really work together. And one of the strains of tension, if you will, through the negotiation, and even a little bit here tonight, is are the resources enough to be able to really make as much of an impact as we want for the, in the African-American community that has been disproportionately affected by the war on drugs? But we also heard from the API community here tonight about the plight of a lot of people from the Southeast Asian community, for example, in terms of the impact of the current drug situation. And so this is a model, in my view, for how to invest in small business around the concept of inclusive economic development. And it's great, but we're only starting with a million dollars. We need more capacity in this city to invest in inclusive economic development, period. Not only in this business, but in all of the different businesses and areas of growth that we want to see in Sacramento. Not a political speech, by the way, just a recognition about what is needed in this community, so we can do more for more people, for more businesses, in all of our communities and all of our neighborhoods. All right. All in favor of the motion as amended, please say aye. Aye. Well, first of all, don't we have to waive the rule? We didn't do that.
As long as we have two-thirds of the vote.
So as we have two-thirds vote, okay. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstained, that passes on a vote of six to nothing. The requisite two-thirds vote on the rule waiver, majority on the motion. That measure passes. We have a core program. Thank you very much.
Number two.
Jake, we have one witness on item two, and it'll take two seconds, so why don't we get that done, okay? Let's do item two, Mr. Devlin, very, very quickly, and then we're going to recess this portion of the meeting.
Again, Mr., thank you, Mr. Mayor. Joseph Devlin, with your Office of Cannabis Policy and Enforcement. We covered this item in, in the workshop. The proposal is to make some amendments to the count, to the city's ordinance for distribution. We currently have some language in there that I would describe as a little bit arbitrary, such related to square footage. What staff is proposing is to align that with, with the state's, with the state's policies. It'd be, it'd be a tiered distribution permit based on grocery receipts. It's also established as a transportation-only permit. Those, those businesses do not take possession of cannabis. They merely move cannabis from one business to the other.
Thank you very, thank you. I think we'll, we'll open it up to the public testimony, will then put it to Councilmember Shanir, who I know you've worked closely with on this item, for a motion.
Our one speaker is McWorthy.
Mainly that part goes to the heart of what I said. You're not teaching my people free enterprise. You're teaching my people socialism and dictatorship, to depend on the system. That's all you teach them, depending on the system. And sorry, my people, that you don't know enough about free enterprise to present yourself to these people. Alan, Alan had a tip of it, and Alan, you was told to set up a meeting with me, and you didn't. And you are not representing your people in free enterprise. You want for yourself. You've got to be able to turn the corner in free enterprise, and you will not do it with marijuana. I'm going to tell you that now. It's not there, and it never will be there. You've got to go to the housing people. Why this didn't come up for our opportunity with rental property? Those are facts in free enterprise. Those are profits in free enterprise. When you are busted and put too much marijuana, then what going to happen to your business? Then these are things you've got to ask. These are the things that you refuse to ask. These are the things that I ask, and I'm not the only person who asked that. Nobody calls them at where they're sitting on this with a brain staming. But you bring it here, and my people buy, they clap, and they run. You drop them a few crumbs, they all right. People, that don't work. The next, next two years is going to be devastating. Hope for my president to get back in for the next four years, and we will see what enterprise is about, and we'll see what the Constitution is about. Go back to the Constitution, people. Go back to the Constitution. The system owes you nothing. Go back to the Constitution and get your piece of the rock. Ownership. Understand ownership. That's all I'm asking you, to understand ownership of your own business. You don't show nobody your receipts until you file your taxes. When you do show people your receipts, you're going to go to jail.
Mr. Worthy.
Okay. Councilmember Shanir.
Thank you, mayor. So this is something else that we spent some time on Law &amp; Legends, is I would characterize this as making the systems work better. With that, I want to open and close the public hearing and move the staff recommendation.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. No further council comments. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstained. That measure passes on a six-to-nothing vote. Thank you. Now, members, as I understand it, when we recess, which you must do, the TV folks need 10 minutes to replace the tapes and all, so we're going to recess the city council till 5:30. Do we have closed session? We're going to do the closed session, which will be a brief one after the evening session, if that's okay. All right, we are in recess. Thank you.